Roll call.
Parker.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Dennison.
Here.
Howser.
Here.
Leach.
Okay, we're gonna open with the purpose of this hearing, this public hearing is for the plant commission to consider a special use application for Lindsay Summers to operate a home occupant, occupation in our home residence at two oh seven West Front Street in Buchanan. We will go on with the announcement of the rules. This is a public hearing designed to receive comments and review of an application submitted by Lindsay Summers to operate a home occupation at her residence at two oh seven West Front Street in Buchanan. Only comments regarding this subject will be accepted. All persons wishing to comment will be given the opportunity to do so. A person dressing the commission, addressing the commission shall stand, state their name, his or her name, and direct their comments directly to the commission. In event a large number of people wish to comment, the chairperson may announce that each person shall be speaking and limited to three minutes. Each person shall have the opportunity to speak before anyone is allowed to speak a second time. The chairperson may at his or her discretion terminate comments which are unreasonable, lengthy, or unrelated to the subject. When the chairperson observes that there are no more further comments, they shall close the portion of the hearing. At this point, we can start the presentation by the applicant.
Hi, hello, I'm Lindsay Summers and I'm a resident, obviously, here in Buchanan, Michigan, right at two oh seven West Front Street. I have been a hairstylist for over eighteen years and some things that I'll actually just kind of go over with the summary that I had given to present to you in my request for the special use application for the salon in my home. I'm just looking to do a one-chair in-home salon and it's currently in a room that already exists in my home. I'm just looking for it to be a harmonious way to enhance the quality of not only my life, but also the communities as well. Along with just many recent changes in the economy, with my children, my marital status, current salon rent, salon rent is increasing. It just gave me the opportunity and had me in a moment of reflection of all of the things that I was doing and what it is that I'm looking to continue to do. And so with that, one of the biggest things that came about were the costs that I was incurring in having a salon and I've always done it where I basically own or rent my chair. And the expenses last year were around ten thousand only for my rents and probably getting over to Granger's because I'm currently in Indiana. I'm both licensed in Michigan and Indiana currently. And so with that kind of savings, being able to turn my home, turn a room that already exists in my home, I would be able to not only save a lot of money, but also bring money back into Michigan and bring money into the community. I always hear my clients actually always saying just like how much they love the city, but they never come here. And that's just one of the things that I, that really stood out to me is just how cool it would be to have them be able to come and be a part of the community and, you know, experience and spend money here as well. But also hugely for me, I'm a big time person, like I value time beyond a lot of things. And so with being the only one in the home with my kids, it would just, it would greatly impact my ability to not only take care of my family, but also take care of, you know, my community and my clients at the same time. One of the things, some of the things that hugely that the money side helps me with is to be able to invest into my own home is the curb appeal and having actually somebody maybe help me with that because of my time being so valuable and not having as much time necessarily on my hands. So that's to help, you know, increase my property value and also it just, it looks nice and so it attracts more people in to our spaces. And then also I drive a lot and a lot of my clients are from Michigan as well. And so while I have some from Indiana, a lot of them are from maybe Niles or St. Joe because I originally for about fifteen years was from Niles and worked in Niles. So many of my clients are from there, so there's a lot more driving. So not only am I gonna save about three to five hours a week of my gas, but also my clients are going to be driving less and less emissions into the air. Given that I'm right on Front Street and in town, the added yet non-disruptive traffic into the city is gonna bring patrons in coming through the town, supporting the businesses. And then the added time I will now have on my bottom line also allows me the freedom to enjoy our town a little bit more. I would say my time is definitely capped most of the time. And so it's something I'm looking to personally do more. So I have over eighteen years in the industry. I have a full clientele, like I mentioned, from both Indiana and Michigan. I'm additionally a life coach and doing additional training in that. And one of the biggest things that my clients personally have is more of like a personal transformation when they sit in my chair with their hair and I just, I'm a firm believer that when we feel good and when we go out in the world and we, it's not just about the hair, it's about who we actually are all of the time. And so that's, I'll be able to take on more clients in a sense because I'll be more in town and here. And so the impact is just wildly expansive in my personal opinion. So I'm really hopeful that you guys accept my application and hopeful, I'm really excited. I'm super excited actually to be able to bring my business into my home, to bring my business into Buchanan. And so I'm really excited just at the thought of like all of the things that come with that. And so with that, I don't know if there's anything I can answer beyond yes.
Are you going to do away with your business in Granger?
Yes. So as a licensed professional, we can only operate out of one salon.
I see.
So yes, so I will only be in Michigan or in my home.
I have a question. What are your hours of operation?
So I currently work Wednesdays, I would say about the earliest are about noon to eight or nine. And then by Thursdays I work sometimes like nine to nine. Those are my long days. Those are pretty much the only two days I work and some Saturdays. So I do work another full-time job actually on top of this.
Have you, have you designated like where your customers are gonna park in your driveway or?
I have. I have a, I don't know that.
It's on a map there.
There's two different maps that I did. I have a double, I have a double parking and then there's actually another gravel section. So, I mean, I know that people can't stack in necessarily, but they can either park two like this and then one, it would almost be like parallel parking in my driveway because there's a whole other car spot. And then the way this is, I don't technically know how many parking spots that is. I'm actually open to like understanding what the best possible.
But ideally you're only gonna have one customer at a time anyway, right?
One to two, yes, correct.
Ralph, questions?
No, I'm good.
Tony, questions?
I think I'm good other than, you're gonna have a sign of some sort to let people know that you're there.
Yes, when I looked at the rules, it could only be a small sign that has to be attached to my home is what it looked like. So whatever's in compliance to that is what I would do it based on. I would probably put it on the side of my house. If signage isn't required, then I maybe wouldn't even put a sign up.
It's not required however, but as you noted, there's a maximum size.
Yes.
It's pretty small.
It is, so I personally probably wouldn't even put a sign. I'll be appointment only. Like if the, my hours of operation wouldn't be open just to walk in at any point, they would have to be by appointment only.
The only question, other question I have would be, would your business like generate a greener amount of trash than a normal household? That you're gonna need like a dumpster or anything?
No, no.
Any other questions? I have none. Go ahead and sit down.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, we will ask anybody in the audience if they have opposition to this. They can stand up, state their name. Look and see if there's any money to you. Did we receive anything written as far as in favor of or in opposition?
We did not.
No emails, no letters?
Only one email from the chairman of the plant commission who indicated he would have no approval.
I think we all saw that. Thank him, I'm thanking him still. Would you like to rebut anything here?
No, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this time, we will call the regular plant commission meeting to order. And we will start with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. If you'll go ahead and take roll call, please.
Parker.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Dennison.
Here.
Howser.
Here.
Leach.
Okay, we will review and I will, everybody take a look at the agenda for approval, please. If there are no objections, then we can have some.
How do you make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
The only thing I might ask is, I mean, I don't know how much time we're gonna spend on our zoning ordinance, but I don't know if she wants to sit through that whole thing. I mean, I know it's new business, but.
Do you want to shuffle things?
Could shuffle it around. I agree with you, Ralph.
And there's no sense in making this a period?
No. Are you gonna sit at the meeting anyway?
Not if, I have a son at home, so not if I don't have to.
So I'm open to shuffling that a little bit.
Let's go ahead and shuffle new business up to item number eight. And we will shuffle old business down to item number nine.
Can I make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
The amended agenda. And I'll second that. Has a motion and it has an approval. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll just take a voice vote. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With none opposed, we shall proceed with the amended agenda. And then we need to review two sets of minutes from the November twenty-ninth workshop. Oh, public comments, I skipped right over that. Jason always does that too. I was trying to feel like Jason. Any public comments for agenda items only?
Do I need to stand up or can I speak loud enough? I'm Dan Bianski, one oh three North Detroit. Where is our chairman? I mean, what is his attendance record? And I mean, I know he's a brilliant man and he contributes a lot, but attendance is very key. And, you know, we really need to start looking at this as committees and commissions on attendance because if you don't show up for the meetings, Ralph, would you keep somebody that didn't work, didn't show up four times out of the week? You know, you wouldn't. Neither would you, Kevin. Neither would you, Sean. And this is nothing against him. I'm not making this personal. I just wanna make that point.
Okay, point well taken. And I don't think, you know, obviously, I can't answer the question because I don't know where he's at. I don't know if it's personal or work-related or what, so at this point, I don't.
Well, I mean, it's irrelevant. I mean, I don't wanna know what he's doing either. It's irrelevant. You know, it, it's just that he's not here and we only have these meetings once a month. That's my whole point.
Okay, point well taken. Any other public comments for agenda items? Yeah, that was kind of not an agenda item. That should have been item number ten, but that's okay. We're a little out of order, but it's in the, it's in the meeting notes now. Now we can go to the approval of the minutes. And let's take them one at a time because November twenty-ninth was pretty lengthy. If I remember right. Well, no, it seemed pretty short. There were just a lot of attachments.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty-ninth.
I'll support it.
Discussion? We have a motion and we have support. We can go ahead and take a voice call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are approved. Now we'll do the consideration for the approval of the regular meeting notes from December thirteenth.
Helen's here, but I'll make a motion to approve that.
No?
No, you don't, you don't need to do that, no. It's not a good idea if you're not here. I'm not officially on board.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from.
December thirteenth.
December thirteenth. Later meeting.
Motion has been made by Ralph McDonald to approve the minutes as written. We have a support by the mayor. Any further discussion?
I guess I should say that I have stayed from this since I wasn't here, eh?
That is correct. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes as written, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, those have been approved. Now we will skip on to new business, the special use for home occupancy at two oh seven West Front Street by Lindsay.
Can I make this motion to approve the special use of home occupation at two oh seven West Front Street by Lindsay Summers?
Yes, you can make that motion.
I'll support.
We have approval of that special use and we have support. Any further discussion? Any further questions?
Would you amend your motion to include the finding of fact, the staff report? Because that should be included.
That's the finding of fact that was written by the administrator.
So should I repeat this? I make a motion to approve special use of home occupation at two oh seven West Front Street by Lindsay Summers to include.
Based on.
Based findings?
Based on the finding of fact.
Based finding of fact.
Yep. Yes. Richard Martin still supports that. Any further discussion or questions with the applicant?
No, the only thing I would say is if, when it, when it, the time comes, if you feel like you need a sign, I would just get with Rich and figure out exactly what size it needs to be and we'll make sure that you're.
And location and lighting and things like that. Okay? With that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Dennison.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Leach. Urker.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
It's pretty balanced. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I've only been working so hard.
When we make appointments, is that phone number?
Yes.
All the ladies at City Hall are interested too.
Yes, I know. They, they keep asking me. Did you get approval yet? No, not yet.
Well, I knew that. I wish you'd have brought your stuff today.
Yeah, I should have. Actually, it is in here.
Well, step up here.
See how good I am.
I could do two things at once. I could sit still. You're all set.
Okay, I just moved forward?
You moved forward.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. With that, now we will move on to old business, zoning ordinance project update and discussion. Gosh, we almost need to refresh our memories from here. One question I do have, Rich, you and I spoke briefly about getting some information that was done by the folks when they did the research about where they found some non-complying lots in certain neighborhoods. Were you able to track that down from that?
Yeah, they, they've given me several examples. Gets a little technical, so I was gonna wait for them to address that question.
Okay. Yeah, because I was hoping to get it a little bit before them because I think it could help us move along faster. Yeah, on setbacks and, and certain violations because I think like you and I discussed a little bit, if there's just one or two in a neighborhood, I don't wanna change our zoning ordinance to address one or two non-complying sites and lots. But if there's a, if there's an overwhelming, you know, discrepancy in one of the neighborhoods, I think we should address it and take those things into consideration. And I guess that's kind of the information I'm looking for.
They will, you know, I, what I'm wanting to do tonight is just get a consensus from you guys on strategy. What are we gonna do? That is an easy question for them to, you know, walk us through and give us several examples of, you know, all the lots that are non-conforming and why. You know, they gave, they gave me several examples and I want them to bring it up on the screen and walk you guys through that. And I think that, that setback issue could be addressed easily that way.
Okay, if you feel like it can be done.
I'm curious from, from a standpoint on the PUD, how, how, how we sit right now. We've had a lot of discussion about the PUDs, whether to keep them or move on to this neighborhood commercial, I believe it is.
Well, right now, they're talking about putting it back in with the revision.
It's back in.
Yeah, it's back in.
They're gonna, they're gonna offer both tools.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I think that's a good direction to go.
Okay.
PUD is back in.
Yeah.
I sent this email on the fourteenth. It noted the, you know, we're on the second draft of the ordinance. It noted the large pieces where the inclusion of the current PUD standards are now back in.
Okay.
We took the mayor's suggestion on inclusion of sign illustrations and we changed alternative dwelling units in home occupations to be all special use requests. So nothing's automatic. You'd have to come in with this, you know, same thing we did tonight, site plan, you know, look at all the, the volume, capacity issues, if it's in harmony, et cetera, and certainly for a build-out of any sort.
That makes me happy.
There would be a, I think, a lot of scrutiny.
Yeah, I, no, I think.
I was in favor of that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
We tried to get some big things out of the way just so we could get some momentum, maybe build some confidence in you guys with the consultant that they're willing to listen and make these changes. Those are the three big ones.
Yeah, and I think we're moving in the right direction and I think a lot of it is just gonna be getting down into where we start drawing some of these lines and if they start even, you know, I think we need to take a close look at the work we did on our master plan and align these things. A couple of concerns I've got and we'll direct those when we start getting into it a little bit more is just tying, tying some of these things together. I guess in a more, an easier to read, more comprehensive flow through the, through the ordinance. One of the other things I noticed when I was drawing, where was I going the other day? Gosh, old age is helling. Where were you the other day?
I don't know where I was this afternoon.
I don't know where he is now. That's right.
Trying to think what, what small community I was in. And I've noticed that they have a lot of new house starts on their blank lots in town.
Small, small city lots.
Yep, small city lots. A lot of that seems to be going on.
We're hoping to get caught up here with that.
I know where it was. It was in Three Rivers. Yep, driving through one of the neighborhoods in Three Rivers. And some of the lots that had just been blank before or had had a house recently torn down in the last four or five years, new house starts.
Wow, that's great.
And it's good to see that.
It is.
And we need to figure out how and if we can do that in this community and make the zoning very appealing to that.
So I, you know, I mean, maybe it makes sense for me to catch you guys up at an upcoming meeting, but we're doing just that. We've inventoried all our city-controlled lots. They're all clean, they're all flat. Most of them are in the north side neighborhood. And I, under the, with the commission's direction, prioritized a process where we're gonna rate these lots. I've met with six or seven contractors over the last month. Every one of these contractors is interested in knowing. At the same time, we're trying to listen to the neighborhood and what they want there, which is they want small, single-family, either starter or empty nest houses. They, they would like to see new families move in. Some more of a homeownership culture. At the same time, we're going out to bid on the pavilion and I have a grant for playground equipment in the neighborhood and we're trying to energize the riverfront public access. So there's other, there's a four-acre parcel across the street owned by Kim Moyer that's being looked at. So there, there's a lot of moving parts of this. But we're moving pretty aggressively forward. What we'd like to see is, since the city controls the lots, that's our leverage, we own them. How can we leverage that to get homes built?
Sure. Well, I think one of the things that it seemed to me, and correct me if I'm wrong from, from up here, but I think one of the things we, we felt when we were doing the master plan is that we still wanted to have a small-town feel, a neighborhood feel. And we still wanted that single-family feeling out in the neighborhoods, but focus more on main thoroughfares like Red Bud Trail, River Street, Front Street as far as doing maybe where we could do a combination of commercial, residential sort of things. Isn't that kind of what we were talking about?
Mixed use with, with residents above.
Yeah, mixed use in those sort of areas and kind of leave the residents having the small-town feel to it.
Because I think we even talked about doing the, you know, on South Red Bud, I think it got some pushback. I think Alan might have been here giving us some pushing back a little bit on, on that.
Yeah, I don't.
So I think we, we were focusing on up around, you know, up around.
Right, sure. But I, you know, one of the things I think Red Bud Trail South brings is at some point in the downtown, I think even in our master plan, we showed expanding from downtown in that direction, which could expand all the way to the tracks because up at the tracks, we already have a couple of commercial buildings. We've kind of got this island of a few blocks in there that have residential that, you know, at some point are gonna be worn and ready to go and, and the people, you know, may decide to, the developer may decide to do something with those.
I agree with that totally. However, the, the topography on the east side is a little iffy with the building stuff, but for the most part.
True.
For the most part, I think that would work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rich, when you say you leverage city-owned lots, does that mean they're like discounted, or, I mean, if you build on it, you get the lot for free? I mean, I'm not suggesting that.
That's on the table, yeah.
I'm just saying.
Because we have a gap to close.
What's the intent on leveraging?
Well, I mean, we've been trying to come up with a strategy that we think would work and make the most sense. You know, if we could find a contractor who said, hey, I'd like to build platforms, would you do platforms? And, you know, and do this size of a home that is affordable and...
You'd want to keep that window pretty short, though, right?
Yeah. And that's another thing, we want to make sure that they start doing it soon, like we don't want it to sit there empty.
And not start, but end.
Well, the thing, gotta be cautious out there, too. There'll be, there'll be somebody that'll sneak in and, you know, will go ahead and sign up for that leverage, and then he'll sell his concept, basically. He won't do it. He'll sell it to somebody to make a profit. He'll try to make himself the middleman.
I mean, this is where you guys are valuable because we need, I mean, those are the things we need to be thinking of when we write these up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be careful about the start date, but the finish date's really the one that matters, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know what I mean. I mean, we don't want somebody to buy the lot and then just continue to have to sit there.
Right, right, exactly.
Won't buy the lot and then try to resell it based on, this is what we're gonna do.
Yeah, then that gain is zero then, really.
Yeah, it is.
One thing about that neighborhood is it was kind of sleeping for a while. Well, it woke up. People are aware of that neighborhood. They know it's quiet, safe, and close to the river, and it's still affordable. So there's a lot of eyes on it right now, so.
It's gonna have one of the nicest parks in the city here.
Yeah, we'll have a nice park. You know, the thing is, is now we're up against other constraints like, you know, what happens if somebody says, build a $250,000 house? What is that gonna do to...
What's wrong with if they do?
Well, but that's what we've heard from that neighborhood is they don't want that.
It's just, we're trying to...
Unfortunately, a $250,000 home is that big. I don't know what you think it looks like, but it was when we were kids, that's for sure.
For example, I mean, this is something I've mentioned before, is that modular-looking house out there on...
Right by Cameron's?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can't stand that. It bothers me.
I didn't realize, I just drove by, I didn't realize it was so close to Cameron's house. Like, it's really close to his. I didn't realize that.
And I don't know if you can stipulate that on those other city lots.
How about prefab homes?
The thing is, is that...
The type of home?
That looks like a double-wide. The other ones that I've seen look pretty nice.
There's some attractive-looking prefab homes. I mean, I wouldn't rule them out generally, but I'd be real careful about...
I totally agree.
What someone's steeled on.
I'm very cautious about quality of development. I don't want junky adults out there.
Do those houses on Sherwood, were they prefab or were they...
They should be.
Well, and, you know, 250 might have been low because that's probably what would be affordable.
Yeah, 250 is low. I mean, that's...
350, 450, you know, I mean, it's just, there's a...
But one of the, I mean, sorry, one of the things that came up when we were talking with the Northside neighbors, gentrification came up. We started talking about doing something with Riverwalk and the Nancy Mannings, that where are we gonna go when people start wanting to live there?
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we have to be...
And parking in front of their houses and parking, exactly, and just dumping their trash and everything else. I mean, you know, I live in a place where they pick up the canoers over off the Delawjack River, and you should see all the trash that blows up from both the people and the stuff that they leave behind.
So we're thinking about what kind of houses and, you know, how we're gonna weigh them out, it's something to keep in mind. You know, try it out with people that are already...
Right.
So could we do a diversified portfolio of a couple affordable homes, a couple, you know, market homes, a PUD across the street? Now you're talking about a more diversified product, you know, I think that's healthier for the neighborhood.
Well, one thing it could encourage is, I mean, whenever you've got a PUD, you encourage it to belong to the neighborhood. And, you know, across the street over there, that four acres, I mean, what belongs and what are you tying it to? If you're tying it to, you know, the west side or the east side of Red Bud Trail, but see, you've got some commercial there, so there's some other things you can do. I mean, there's a lot, I guess that four acres could almost stand alone if somebody wanted to do a couple of apartment buildings or duplexes or other things there. And that's one of the sites, if I remember right, in our master plan, we looked at being a mixed-use residential, commercial sort of thing. So there's a lot of possibilities there as far as zoning.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys remember what Andrews proposed, but they...
Yeah, I do remember. They had it. It was cool.
It is a common area in the middle and like cottages, you know.
They had a lot of duplexes.
Was there some retail in there, too?
I don't know if they had retail or not.
I think there was retail in there, wasn't there?
I think it was just high-density housing.
There might have been a clubhouse or something, but not...
It was just high-density housing.
There you go.
Yeah.
You know, and I think if you look at the north side with this parcel, maybe some affordable, gap-financed units. I'm also looking at philanthropic organizations and foundations that would partner with us. So I'm having discussions with these people right now, and I kind of want to look at this project as a holistic north-side revitalization. Or it'd be riverfront, single-family, PUD, because you can't really put it in a category. It's just a diversified portfolio, which I think is good.
Well, one of the things, and I think Van, is it Van Mar, Van Mayer?
Yeah.
He brought up was, he wanted to eliminate parking requirements, and I think we really don't want to do that, especially when we're considering something like that. Parking, you know, you eliminate parking requirements, now you're gonna run into old neighborhoods in Chicago. And, you know, that's one of the problems they've got over there. I think we need to make sure we stick to parking requirements. And when we're looking at something like that, where it becomes a destination for people out of town near a neighborhood, we may want to make sure that we supply adequate, if not a little more than adequate parking, to keep people from parking on the streets and in the neighborhoods.
I want to show you guys one other thing. If you go to our website, cityvcan.com, community development, Emma's really been helping me a lot with this project. But we have city-owned properties available for redevelopment. And so we've listed them, we've created thumbnails, we've walked the property, we've done due diligence on utilities, availability of sewer and water. And this was the presentation I gave to the city commission. It gives a site plan of all the available properties, and you go down, there's commercial, industrial, and then the residential infill. So the residential infill presents probably about 15 lots within, you know, 500 feet to 1,000 feet of each other in this neighborhood. So could we mobilize a couple contractors to, you know, if they get some, if they're incentivized, if we're working with a foundation partner, you know, could we look at... Imagine Elizabeth Street with three or four brand-new cute, single-family houses, 1,400 square foot or something. What that would do for that neighborhood, send this positive economic signal that the neighborhood's back, in tandem with, you know, the development of the park and the visioning of the river. So now things are starting to happen, and the...
Well, to me, the key word is cute, I mean, again, I'd be concerned with that.
One of the things...
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I want to just emphasize how careful I am with quality. I would rather do nothing unless...
Than do it wrong.
Unless if you look at it and that, does that, will that cause revitalization? Will that cost someone to build across the street? You know, if they look at it and say, oh, you know, that's not, that's no quality, what's the purpose, right? We're going backwards.
Yeah, very good point.
The other thing, too, and we've run into this before, and it's an issue in this area, is ground contamination. I mean, has that been addressed? Is it disclosed? I mean, you can give...
We're addressing it on the commercial lots where we know it exists, or there's paperwork that says there's problems, even though there aren't in some cases.
I agree with you.
There's no case one requirement on residential, is there?
I don't believe there is, unless a bank would do it. A bank might require it, but I don't think they would. It's just commercial.
It's floodplain-related, but not contamination?
Yeah, I agree with you there. I was just thinking about what happened up here with On the Hill. And I agree with you about is it real contamination or is it not real contamination because the levels that, you know, we can argue about that all day long. It just depends on what...
So what's it contaminated with somewhere?
A lot of times, it's arsenic on the surface, you know, there's a lot of, but arsenic occurs on the ground surface.
Naturally.
Naturally. It's just the levels can be higher. And depending on how deep you go, there could be other contamination based on what happened with car equipment that was airborne. It was airborne, but I don't know what it was up on the hill that scared that developer away.
Oh, yeah, next to McDonald's.
At the Framery.
The Framery, yeah.
I don't know what was on that. I don't know what McDonald's.
Because they went a long way. They spent a lot of money upfront to get that approved, and it didn't go through.
Rich, have you had any contact with Casey's or anybody from them at all?
Yeah, I talked to Corporate probably three months ago.
Yeah.
And I just asked, they were doing a project somewhere in the region.
They were in the region?
Yeah. And I'm aware that they were here at one point.
They were, next to McDonald's. They had zero interest?
No, they have interest. We just need to follow up with them, keep others' radar.
Yeah, well...
I would send them that.
Are there any grants available or anything for contamination?
Yeah. Like, for example, give you an example, the old feed mill. So there's some small issues over there. We're taking, working with our environmental consultant for remediation. We're gonna be good on that. We gotta monitor groundwater, but that's...
Yeah, that's normal.
Everybody does that, right? So...
What consultant are you working with?
Point Blue, Mark Solomon.
Okay, sorry.
We're also getting a demo package for the demolition of the building. That could come in at a high number, 200, 250, you know, gonna rip off foundations, all the silos. I'm going after a land bank credit, 200 grand for that. I mean, nothing is without, not, everything we're doing, there's a parallel track to finding money.
Okay.
It's just, sometimes it's not, sometimes it works.
We don't have any.
Sometimes it does.
Rich, that's why we love you, buddy. Keep after it. You chase that money.
Well, you know, that's, and just to kind of stick up for Richard, that's what takes so long, too, on some of these things. I mean, you're trying to do it wisely, you're trying to find money to do it, and it slows things down, but we have no choice.
Without a doubt, and, you know, he's wearing more than one hat here, too.
Yeah.
So, you know, he tries to do this also, and he's doing a very good job at this also, but that's very important.
We're going after two really cool grants, April 1st, they're due, so we're in kind of like crunch mode right now. But we're going after playground equipment in Victory Park, which will be the tandem to the million. I think it'd be a huge statement for that neighborhood at a perfect time when contractors are looking to build, so we're showing some tangible progress. And then we're going after a kayak launch on the river. That's a bigger project, it's, because it's ADA accessible.
On which?
On the river park.
North River Park. Our boat launch, ready for a 948, it's probably good.
Okay.
It's a public boat launch that really no one uses except that homeless guy in Old Trenton. He camps down there.
Oh, he would in his boat.
Dan catches him camping down there quite often.
Down there with a machete. Wants to eat my dog every time I take my dog down there.
Oh, boy. Any more discussion on old business at this point?
What's our next step?
Well, Kevin and Rich and I met to talk about the new zoning ordinance. Basically, what we came out with was, even though we hired them to write it for us, we don't have to accept everything we use. We can push back.
Let's hope not.
Yeah. But I think it's also important to keep an open mind, maybe there are new ways to do things that we need to...
Sure there is.
Because there are always...
The other thing is, there's no take-the-time component. We're not...
We don't have to watch this.
No, we don't.
No, that goes right back to what you were just saying about building a house. I mean, let's do it right and move forward, not 10 steps back.
We don't have a deadline. I think the next step, Ralph, if I could make this suggestion, I think we go through the zoning ordinance as it has been revised and presented to us. I think we put our comments down, and I think we bring those comments. We can either submit them before our next meeting, which I would like to say everybody do, so that when we get to our next meeting, everybody here's kind of got some input. So that if I've made a suggestion that is the same as Ralph or the same as Richard here, we can kind of elaborate on it. If there's, you know, let's do a bullet point on how many different things we're really looking at and what those important things are. Then in the meeting, use our time more judiciously about this is important, this isn't important, and let's go through it that way. I think if we do that, at least next time, it'll give us a better feel for, okay, are we ready to invite them back again now for the next revision or suggestion?
Yeah, I totally agree with, I like that. I mean, if you think about it, it wasn't pretty making the sausage up until now, but we did make some headway.
Oh, sure.
On some big debate issues, we made some decisions, got them out of the way. Now we need to do that on a handful of other issues, you know.
Absolutely. So if I might suggest that to everybody, that, you know, the week before the meeting, if you've got those comments, let's email them in to Richard. Let him, you know, compile everything. These are, this is comments from so-and-so. This is, and then we'll have that, and then just share them back before the meeting so that we can all kind of read through them.
I like that. And so what I'll do is I'll craft an email summarizing this strategy to all you guys.
Yeah.
And reattach all the links so everyone has the latest versions. And then make that kind of challenge to everybody, give me your comments by this date.
Yeah.
I'll compile them, and we'll have a good, productive meeting.
Totally agree. I like that.
With a clear deadline, I need a deadline.
Yeah, for sure.
So many things going on, I need a...
I'll give a deadline, yeah.
Good.
Our next meeting is the second Tuesday of April.
It's the 11th. April 11th.
Just one, two.
Yeah, so if we got our comments back by the 4th or something, that'd be great. 3rd, 4th, something like that.
Is that enough time for you, though? Like, to give you a week to...
It's fine.
Well, I think you can just take your comments the way they are and just list them on one sheet.
Just forward them now.
Yeah, just forward them up. List them on one sheet. Any more discussion on old business? Ralph, we'll start at your end. Any more old discussion? Old discussion on new old business? Tony?
Just since, it says Ralph made this comment, but when I was through the downtown stakeholders meeting there, they were really concerned about limiting the square footage amount of marijuana and different style, marijuana-like style businesses. Did that make it in there or... Did that make it in there or, and they're, I just realized...
It's based on the percentage of frontage that we...
Okay.
And this, this issue we talked about, um, if you put it in zoning, it's sustainable. If you just wait to see who can select it next, they might change it.
Sure.
I mean, it's more of a long-term, um, embedded zoning issue. If, if, if you don't want more dispensaries or you don't wanna put all your eggs in one basket, if you think five's enough right now on Front Street, uh...
Well, they, they also were grouping in like head shops and glass shops, too.
Well, we, we might wanna think about that, too. It's open for discussion. You, you guys are the boss on that, but, uh, you know, Niles doesn't have any head shops. We have two. I don't know how that happened, but...
We always like to stay, step ahead of Niles.
We're trendsetters.
We're trendsetters.
He's beginning.
Yeah.
And, you know, they can be controversial.
Well, well, you know, that's the whole thing is, you can say no, but at some point, they're gonna disguise it as something else and just happen to do the same thing. Glassworks, I mean...
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, when, when Cameron was putting that in to his place, you know, I questioned it, and I got, oh, no, it's decorative.
Artists.
And it's, it's glasswork. And I was like...
Artis, yeah.
Sure.
It's an artisanal log in the window, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's the best, right?
Yeah, there was a big inflatable joint in the window that I promptly asked them to remove, which they did, but...
Thank God.
Yeah.
You guys might be aware, but there's a lot of just compression in the industry of getting this right now.
Yeah, I honestly think that in the next five years, it's gonna look a lot different then, because, because the, the marijuana industry is changing so much, so fast that I, I don't see...
It's a moving target.
Yep.
I see it as sustainable as long as Indiana doesn't come on board.
Well, that's just a matter of time, though.
It's just gonna come down to the levels like the breweries and, and bars, that they're not gonna be making a hundred thousand dollars a day, they're gonna be making fourteen to twenty, and it's gonna become a regular business, not a booming business.
Yep.
But that'll make people consider, do I really wanna be here? Like, do I really wanna stay here for, you know, I, I just think it's going to change.
You do wanna keep the doors open, yeah. It's like any business. Richard? Any other thing?
No, sir.
Okay. Sean?
I got it.
I've got nothing on that. Uh, saying that, let's go on to public comm, uh, public comment, non-agenda items only.
I just wanna ask you guys for your input on something that I've been, had my teeth wrapped around, the lease option on these properties. I was told to keep a lease, lease to own on these vacant lots, that's the only way we really can control what they do. No matter what we write up, if they have the deed to that property, they can do pretty much whatever they want to with that property. And all you can do is take them to court to get that property back. But as a lease, a lease, you can foreclose on them in twelve months, no holds barred. So, I mean, it really stuck in my head when that idea was put there.
You're absolutely right about it. And, and actually, I do that with a lot of things that I sell under land contract, is I always hold that deed before it gets transferred over, until that is satisfied. And until that's satisfied, I still have the sale of that piece of property. And the lease idea is the same thing.
Well, it was Bering County that told me that. I mean, I called the county courthouse, and he says, you give that deed up, you really don't have any control anymore at all.
Absolutely correct, yeah. Totally agree with that.
I just wanted to ask you guys so that you guys can put that across to the rest of the people.
No, and, I mean, that, you should bring that up in the commission meeting, because that is absolutely the way, if I owned that, I would do it. So that you've got control of it until you see that product coming up. Because what you can do at the end of that lease is you can, you can turn it over for one dollar in consideration for one dollar, and it's done.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, the contract for, yeah.
So, so...
Monetary exchange for the contract.
Yeah. Uh, the way you've gotta be careful on that, though, is see how it's gonna be taxed through the county at that point. Because if you've got a sale, do you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And, and that may be a good question for somebody...
But with a city-owned property, there would be no tax.
Until it's turned over.
Right.
But you don't want them to be, you don't want them to own that based on a one-dollar value. It's gotta, somehow, there's gotta be a value placed on that that's a fair tax amount. Do you see what I mean?
Well, the one-dollar value would only be the vacant land, though.
Right.
And the property on the prop, on the prop, the building on the property would be what the taxable value would be anyhow.
Probably, yeah. But there should be some land value added to that also.
All right.
And I don't, and, and I'll be honest, I don't know how to address that.
No, I make sense. But that could be worked into the lease, too.
It could be worked into the lease, true. I, I don't know the logistics on how to handle that, and the county might be able to answer that.
I'm just very wary of giving this control to people, and they do what they want to, or they change the rules three years down the road.
You're, you're absolutely right. It gives you control of it, total control of it.
I agree with that totally. You certainly want control, but how would that affect financing? You say I wanna buy a lot or lease a lot, and I need to borrow a hundred and fifty grand and build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house.
You can do it as long as you honor your, uh, as long as you're honoring that lease, that it, there is a buyout clause in that. Because what they can do is the mortgage company would take into consideration the purchase of that, and they can buy that lease out early. You know what I'm saying, Ralph?
I think so.
So, when they build the building, they can buy the property out. There's a, there's a deal that says, you can lease it for this long, or if you're done early with your project, you can purchase, buy out your lease, and it's done. And then, then you're satisfied in, in, uh, turning over the deed and everything.
I'd just be concerned about building a house, borrowing money on someone else's lot. I mean, I know you have a lease agreement, but it's not technically yours.
They do it all the time on these lakes that have hundred-year leases. People build new houses on them.
Yeah.
They've got a hundred-year lease on them. You go right to the bank, you can build a house on it.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can get into setbacks in zoning that were never followed.
Right.
You know how that is on those lakes? But anyway, yeah, there's, there's a way to make them...
You wanna keep control of it, 'cause, you're right, you turn the deed over, and then it's like, well, I don't know, you know? I told you I'd do it, but now I can't.
No, absolutely. You hold that until, until the project's satisfied. You want control of that.
Can the city, do you sort of like the preservation society put an easement on that, uh, that property? Is it, is it just, uh, the preservation side that can do that?
Put an easement?
Yeah, like there's the Ross Sanders House, though, the, uh, they call it preservation easement, that's what they're calling it, that the, um, that's making them required to follow preservation standards?
Uh, that might be something different. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, it was, it turned me off, but it just sounded like it could.
I, I'm not familiar with that.
One, one thing I would just say is I, I agree with Dan on this point, you know, whatever the city, real estate is a complicated business. We might need some guidance. But whatever we do, we're gonna set it up so that the conveyance happens and we get what we want it, so, you know?
There are some good real estate attorneys up in St. Joe.
Well, it's great you guys put a lot of thought into that.
Yeah, no kidding. But I mean, I'd, I'd love to see some of these blank lots in town get built.
Well, so would we, because we need the tax part to do, but it would also just, it would, it would send a serious message that we're finally doing something, you know?
I'm gonna tell you what, I went down one block, well, probably, it was probably three blocks in Three Rivers, there must've been four new homes going in, in three block...
Hey, did you go to the bookstore?
No, I went over to Fisher Lake. I only go to dine and drink.
You should check out Lowry's Bookstore.
Over, is it right downtown?
Three Rivers.
Old historic downtown.
It's like a million books.
Really?
I've never seen it anywhere like in the country.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Well, did you ever see the guy who was running my space in my building that had a million books? You never went up to his space up there?
I thought that was the guy who had a million cars.
No, he had a million bucks.
I thought that was you.
Not one of my tenants. He had...
The guy had a million bucks.
He had a million bucks, but he didn't have...
Bucks or books?
He didn't have enough for rent, so...
Not books, bucks.
I think he's still got a lot of his store over there. He's an artist and sold books. Never put up a sign. Uh, with that being said, oh, so that was our public non-agenda item comments. Thanks, Dan, for bringing that up. That's a, that's a very good point.
Thank you.
Lost my page here. All right, Director, give us any comments you've got?
I do not.
Presentation?
I don't have any comments, but I...
Okay.
Appreciate, uh, moving ahead, uh, getting strategy on the zoning, and I'll send that email, and we'll get back to work.
Okay, next commissioner comments. Uh, Ralph, we'll start with you.
Uh, I should've brought this up on the agenda approval, and I don't have a subcommittee report, but that probably should've been on there. I missed the last meeting, and I don't have minutes from the trail committee, so I have nothing to report on. I would like to, I would like to comment, though, on what Dan said about Jason. I mean, we've had open seats here forever. I'm not sure what you expect us to do about Jason when he misses.
I don't really know either, Ralph. I really don't.
And additionally, I mean, Jason has busted his ass here for twenty minutes.
I understand that. I understand that. But the thing about it is, is if I don't bring it up, I'm, I'm on all these committees, you know? And I mean, I'm on people all the time, and they're creating new committees all the time, you know? But they won't volunteer for the committees that we have. I mean, we've got Main Street, we've got Buchanan One, they're very aggressive committees, but they won't volunteer for the committees that are core of the city. You understand what I'm saying? I'm not putting down the new committees, you know, at all. They, they wanna take it and make it personal. It's not personal. We need aggressive people on the committees we have.
I'm not implying that at all.
Right.
And I'm saying, and I don't know Jason's attendance record, but I can tell you, he's here most of the times.
Well, I understand, and I'm, I'm at a lot of these meetings, and I've attended a lot.
I don't know if you're implying that we should lean on them to be here more or get rid of them, but I can tell you, we've got open seats, and we can't get people here now.
I understand that, and I'm squawking about it all the time. And it's not just this committee I brought it up about, not at all. I mean, we just now got a full committee on board after ten years.
Yeah.
And we went outside the city for that.
Right.
I mean, we took on, township, which we should've done a long time ago, pardon.
This is never personal. I have never made this personal.
I'm not saying this is personal.
I mean, Jason, when I sat up there with him, he was one of the smartest guys I ever sat and talked to when we went over that...
He's right, very right.
Border review.
Yep.
We went through that border review, and we were back and forth, and I enjoyed working with him. I enjoy working with him a lot. It's just, you know, we lose a meeting, we didn't have a quorum, which was really unusual last month. It put everything back on the...
Well, I was at a town in several...
Well, that, that was partially my fault. I got sick.
Well, I know, but I mean, the, the point being is, is it, it's the first time that it's ever happened. And I even looked into allowing commissioners, but under our charter, you know, if the commissioners could come in and sit in and say for you, I would gladly come down here to at least do, I mean, there was, it was an over there for that address.
It is, I, I agree.
But that, put that back a month.
Yeah.
And there's no reason, see, that's the point I'm trying to make here, Ralph. A lot of this stuff gets postponed a month or two months, and I'm not raising Cain with the people. This is not a personal vendetta. I don't have the time for that.
I understand that is.
Right. But some people take it that way.
They don't.
This got put off a month, you know? Our whole zoning thing, we haven't had but one meeting, and it was a very constructive meeting that we had, when we went through the whole zoning code, you know? And we're gonna pay fifty thousand dollars for that, you know?
Well, the short answer is to fill our empty seats. And we don't have that problem.
That gets a little...
There's another strategy, too, that I'm working out with Cat Cala, that we could have an alternate pool. So, if we get in a situation, uh, we...
There, there's nothing wrong with that, if you can do it. I mean, is it, does it go by city charter that you can do that?
That's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out, so...
Yeah, because if you had two, even if you just had one alternate, but that alternate should be at every meeting, right?
They almost have to be.
So, you're, you're up to date?
So, they know, so you're up to date.
Of course, you just have to fill it.
Because you really can't...
But if, but if you're gonna have an alternate that's gonna come there, they might as well be on here.
Exactly.
They might as well be sitting up here, right?
That's what I'm saying, just fill the seats.
Just fill the seats.
I mean, there...
Well, we have, right?
There's, there's still a...
No, there's, yeah.